Good evening all and welcome to tonight's town council meeting. As usual, we're not expecting a fire, so if the alarm goes off, please leave the building via the way you came in. Firstly, on a personal note, I'd like to thank everyone for their good wishes and generous gifts on the birth of my son Eric Jack Thomas. I'm pleased to say that both baby and mother are doing well. The last month has been genuinely chaotic, so please bear with me as I get everything under control. I've been informed that there's a new bakery slash sandwich shop to take on the old Catherine's Bakery site. This will happen at the end of the month and on behalf of this town council, I welcome the fact that a new bakery is coming in. The shop will be run by the same business owners who have the One Lock Smoothie and we wish them well in this new venture. Some good events, good Christmas events are being planned as we speak. This council organising a Christmas light switch on event for Thursday, the 25th of November, starting at 5:30. Which nicely coincides with the Holy Trinity Church's Christmas tree festival, which begins on the same day. And not forgetting the piece de resistance, the Metronaut Christmas fair taking place on Saturday, the 4th of December. Last night saw a consultation event regarding the local plan and its examination in public. Community groups from all aspects of Metronaut life set representatives to discuss the plan and the upcoming stages. I want to thank the planning committee for organising such an important event, which was worked very smoothly and was essential for community engagement. As you will have seen tonight, on the way in, the town council is carefully using its resources to look after this wonderful building that we meet in. The capola has been safely removed and is now undergoing much needed repair. October also saw the hard work of the gas school management board come to fruition with the planting of wildflower seeds across the top parts of the ground. A big well done to the committee, with wildflowers not only looking great, but providing critical habitat and food sources to our pollinators. And as it's remembrance time, the poppy appeal has its stand from 9am to 3pm. And it's great to see a mix of councillors and members of the public volunteering to run the stand. There is an open air drop head service on Sunday, the 14th, as the remembrance service, starting at 10:50am. Now to item two, do we have any apologies?
Yeah, we have councillor Neil who's working and councillor Fay who is up there as well as Mr Cuddington.
Councillors, I propose that we accept these approved absences.
Thank you. There was a message from Mike.
Oh yes, sorry, can you remember what it was? It did message in.
Yeah, he said his wife who was to his daughter saying, well, you can't get this.
So that would be a family talk. With that, I propose that we accept these approved absences, seconded, all those in favour? Thank you. Then moving on to item three, disclosure of community interests. If anyone has a community interest, they should declare it now. No, then item four, dispensations, which we haven't had any. And then item five, Shropshire Council reports. Councillors, with great disappointment, our call and request regarding builders' power station planning application has failed. We're discussing this later, so I won't draw on it now. I've had an invitation from the applicants, Harworth, to see the options for the Revolution Very Light Railway, which is essentially an energy saving hybrid train that is hoped to be connected to builders, to Telford and beyond, without the use of cars. Our local police team is asking people to sign up for the neighbourhood watch alerts, where you can receive updates on crime and other issues affecting Metronaut and the wider area. You can sign up online or with a paper copy and I'll make details of how to do this to you all. Last month, I mentioned that I was sad to see EC just hidden the, we transferred to another area. But I'm pleased to report the new police constable from Metronaut has been appointed and will receive information on who this is and when this starts shortly. On the 8458 near the entrance to Edaventure, the top of Harley Bank, it continues to have problems with traffic collisions. To help discuss options on mitigating this, I've arranged a meeting with Sergeant Kate Earn and I hope to have an officer from Shropshire Council present as long as well as, sorry, the members of the public who live nearby. Finally, the High Street will be closed on Thursday, the 25th of November for the Christmas light switch on event, as per your agenda. Now to item six, police report, I've submitted a verbal, I've submitted a written report to all councillors. The police can't attend tonight and the report's made available online to the public, so I won't read it out. We'll note that and then we'll move on to item seven, public session.
Trudy, we had no questions to speak yet?
No, haven't, and then we'll move on to the item 8A, the minutes. To approve and adopt the minutes of the town council meeting held on the 7th of October 2021. Councillors, I'm seeking that this meeting, these minutes can be adopted as a true record.
To my point, I sent you not to Trudy, because it gets. Second point on apology, I think we need to add, approve the apology.
Okay.
13B line to add to committee after planning environment.
So what was the other one then?
13B.
13B.
Committee line to planning environment.
Happy.
Just minor thing. I've sent you an email.
Oh right, okay, yeah, I don't know where it came from, I haven't seen that.
Yeah, no, it's only an hour ago.
Oh right, no, I do occasionally go home. Right, so yes, so 13B, planning environment committee. And then to approve the apologies.
Councillors, I think that seems reasonable and then with those minor adjustments, I propose that the meetings minutes be adopted as a true record record. So thank you, all those in favour? Question carried. Item 8B, to adopt the minutes of the planning environment committee held on the 25th of August 2021. Councillors, I'm seeking a proposal to adopt these minutes. The votes seconded, all those in favour? Thank you. And then item 8C, to adopt the minutes of the finance and asset management committee held on the 21st of November 2021. And I propose that we adopt those minutes, seconded, all those in favour? Minutes adopted. So item nine, town clerk's report. Trudy?
I apologise for the raised typos, I think I was just before I went on holiday and I was obviously in a rush. So apologies for that, inasmuch as under September 2021, in number 15, that refers to climate change and where it says invite community activities, that should be in organisations, so apologies for that. Was there anything else? There was another typo under 12C.
I think we're slightly more worried about the work than the question.
I know, I don't have time to say. What I haven't done on there, I have to confess, is under October 2021, there's 12D, right to Shropshire Council, expressing concern about procedural issues connected with the Albridge Power Station application, haven't done that. I had to check with Duncan, well, just before I went on leave and then I just didn't get to do it. And I wanted to check now with councillors, whether you still feel there is any value in doing that. Maybe you can think about that when I get to, or when you get to the correct item on the agenda. Because you may have seen, I did score to you, the outcome of a freedom of information request that was submitted to Shropshire Council by another interested party and the response that we got. So if you still feel it's a benefit for me to do that, then certainly I'll crack on and do it as soon as possible. What else is there? Oh yeah, at the bottom there, other activities, meeting with Graeme Fancy. I had that meeting today with pictures in charge of our HR actually. And Graeme Fancy are looking to improve that engagement with the community and the council. And they've got some proposals about holding events for children to build bird boxes and planters and potentially donating some flower planters to council to put around town. So I'll put that on the agenda as a separate item for you to think about.
Which is actually.
Graeme Fancy.
Graeme Fancy had a meeting with representatives from Graeme Fancy today. Yeah, only had that today and yeah, they're very keen really to engage with the community and prove their profile and their community base. So I thought that that's all quite positive, so to say, I'll put that on the agenda.
This is positive, where the Christmas fair committee normally use Edre Renewables as a site to have a part in life from. But Edre Renewables refused to do it this year and I said they should approach Graeme Fancy and I'm pleased to say that Graeme Fancy are helping with that. I also told them to approach Shadwell Quarry and Shadwell Quarry almost said they'd do that too. Any questions for the town clerk at all?
Can you just, July 2021, arrange a workshop for all councillors to brainstorm ideas, is that still on the?
Neil, we need to give a, I don't need to give a date.
Are we going to have a date?
No, we need to, we need to organise that really, absolutely.
Yeah, I need, essentially, I need to start with the most important person and he's rather pushed at the moment to dates. So it's a matter of finding a time that's convenient really to get everybody together and yeah.
Blame me, wouldn't you?
No, I'm not, not at all, but it's, you know, there's, there's, councillors engage with a lot of different things at the moment, so.
And that would also tie in with item 15, September 2021. Councillors, and then you've got the community decision.
Well, that, that one is to do with climate change, the September 2020 number 15, I didn't. I think there were some other items to do, some have fallen off of the report because they've been dealt with. So that one, inviting community organisations to interrupt the workshop, that's about, that's about climate change and environmental issues and sustainability and so on. So that's a lot to do with the town council's strategic plan. Although, might be relevant, but that's a separate thing. Yeah, so it is still on the go, it's just on hold really until time permits something.
Thank you very much for your report, I love it. Moving on to item 10, to note that the town council's request for the application for the Albridge Power Station because of the Secretary of State has been refused, we note that. Then to item B, to consider any response to this decision or take any further action regarding the power station development at this stage. Councillor Tyler, your views please.
Well, I find it very depressing, such, this call in refuted, it's in such haste. And the fact that it's done by delegated powers to on such an important issue is even more concerning. However, there is very little that we appear to be able to do. I don't know, have letters gone out to the local MPs as we discussed previously? And we have, we have no responses to that at all at this stage.
True, Chair, no, well, it was a request to support our council's call and request. And all I had was the automatic acknowledgement and also one of them, I think it's then the Kozinski always says, I need all things that are on my patch, more or less. So, so no, no substantive response from any of those.
No. Unfortunate. I don't see that we can, we can take this matter any further at this stage. I think we've got to accept the fact that we've been given an extra amount of money, a hundred thousand pounds, which we wouldn't have got had we not pushed. So I think that is, that is positive. That hundred thousand pounds is, is going to be very useful, although it presents a small amount towards what is considered to be the cost of looking at the effects from the Albridge Power Station, it would affect traffic. But, but it's, it's, it's good. I want to come on to other things at the later date, but my feeling is that there is very little else that we can get out of all of this from the SC at this stage, until after we have set up making with the department. I'm very proud of this.
Yeah, I think I would agree with that, I don't see any further we can go with this. Getting extra money for the feasibility study and looking at the, and then getting the data will be crucial to where we go in the future. Personally, I expressed a view before that I'm very surprised if the feasibility study and the data doesn't point to a bypass. I firmly believe that it will do and we'll be able to pick that up and see where we go. But at least when we've got that information, it's irrefutable. I personally don't see where we can go anymore at this time, unless councillors have got any other views then, seeking a proposal.
Councillor?
I still think we should have Philip Dunn to come to Metronaut and talk about.
That's something I'd rather mention a little bit later.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think, I think he's definitely standing.
Yeah, but yeah, I think he's.
He hasn't yet been invited to come to Metronaut, as far as the traffic issue is concerned at this stage.
Overall, I think this town council can be, it's difficult because we have the decision of refusal not come to the committee and that was from the hard work of Duncan and the whole panel committee and Paul Hanafin and a range of community people. And so we've got extra money and that is some consolation, but I think it is what it is now. We need to, we need to move on and we need to look at the next stages of the local plan and everything else and things like that. And therefore, I propose that we take a proper action unless anyone would like to propose different.
Could I just ask a question about procedural issues?
Yes, the letter?
Yes, whether it is worth me at this stage pursuing the procedural issues with Shropshire Council.
I still think, deep down, even though I know it's a complete waste of paper, that we should lodge the fact that we are not happy with the procedural issues that have been pointed out, so that it goes on record. No other reason, because I'm sure it'll produce nothing, but I think it's, it's worthy of note that they should be, you know, told that we're not happy with it and it's been noted by us and, you know, should it happen again, et cetera, et cetera.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I support that, I think we need to record it because it's, it'll come slowly back at some point as well. We need to show that. The other thing I would suggest is we write to the Department of Leveling Up and ask them for an explanation for the decision, because they didn't give us an explanation, they just said, we only get it's one of them. And it was, the response was so quick, it felt like that they'd made their mind before we even got the letter, yeah. So I think, I think a full explanation would be helpful and then we've got that to work off with the council as well. And if we feel there's a, they've missed something or just not taken some consideration, then we can go back to Philip Dunn and say, what's going on?
That sounds good to me, so we've got the decision from trial B from the last meeting to, to express, eh, trial D, sorry, to write to Shropshire Council to express my concern. So now the proposal is to send a letter back to the Secretary of State demanding an explanation on the decision. Do we need to add anything more than that?
I want to receive the letter back. Nicely asking for explanation, not demanding.
Yeah, okay.
It's a shorter sweep, isn't it?
Okay, so the proposal is to send a letter to the Secretary of State asking for explanation as to why our request is refused. That's proposed, seconded.
Oh, seconded.
All those in favour?
Are we voting on both letters, Gary?
I think we don't need to vote on the second one, so you voted on it last.
I'm not trying to.
So we're not changing the decision, so it can just go, so that's all sorted. And then moving on to item 11, consultation event regarding Shropshire draft local plan 2016 to 2038, to consider a report from the town council's local consultation event for the Metronaut groups, organisations and support services held on the 3rd of November 2021. Councillor Fay, so you were at the meeting and did a good job, weren't you?
Thank you, yeah, it was, it was, it was well attended, really good, 20, 25 people?
Twenty-five, yeah.
Twenty-five, multiple varied organisations, the church, although some people wore several hats. The GP surgery, one of the doctors was there and a good representation. And I think it drew in not just the organisations but individuals around the town who could contribute, so that was, that was great. So what did we do? Well, we introduced, there was a copy of the agenda here, I'm going to have a look at the other colleagues who worked here last night, just so you can see what actually was going on, there'll be one from Town Clark as well, because she wants to interview us. What printed it may have expanded. Sorry.
We stopped him.
Yeah, loads of it. So we introduced the event as a, this is a, we want people's views to, to help the council form its case after the examination public to the local plan next year. Still don't know the date for that, but we think first half of the year. Our starting point was that the TC, the town councils, has asked Shropshire Council to drop its proposals and get the best planning solutions for development, future development through a review of the neighbourhood plan. As we know, Shropshire Council didn't do that. We stressed last night that this, this was not a mechanism against development, this is about getting the right development in the right place at the right scale for the town. One which is driven by community ambition and also is much more aware and uses the direction of travel the neighbourhood plan gives us already. So we're going to the meat of it by, the colleagues in the room agreed the five topics they wanted to discuss, so we didn't dictate those and those were traffic, water, I'll call it heritage and quality of place, I think that's what we got through again.
Tourism.
Tourism, thank you, development and infrastructure, particularly health and education. Health and education, yeah. So there were five topics, five tables, and we moved people around after 10 or 15 minutes discussion each. So we generated a whole bunch of stuff, all in draft here, and they will be given out to the colleagues who chaired facilitator of the meetings. So we'll write this up, I think we'll, I suggest that we share a draft of this with our people attending so they can see that we reflected their views in the right up, okay. But I'm reluctant to kind of draw a conclusion here tonight because there's a lot I haven't seen in there. But I think if I were to kind of summarise it, it was a good discussion, lots of ideas. And generally, there was a recognition that there were some pretty big issues that need resolving before we leap into deciding a particular size of site in a particular location.
On development, Councillor.
Sorry?
On development.
On development, yeah. And, and I think that's a, it's a big message. Now we're going to have to work through this and just bring that together a bit and do a little bit clearer what we mean by that. But there's enough in here to, to help us. So before we go on to kind of what we do next, I mean, colleagues who are there, very well supported by the.
I was looking after healthcare and education from there. And it was very interesting to get the views from the people who came to the table, as Mike said, in, in rotation. And we would, it is, as we have said before, tremendous focus on the infrastructure problems with respect to the lack of facility that is currently available, that was surgery and where that expansion will come through. And on education, it was, there were concerns on, on expansion of the schools relative to the 4.4 million that have been proposed. Where would the extra students be fitted? Is there enough capacity there? Where does the expansion go? And also on the primary school, where would the expansion come from to accommodate what is 200 running over the next twelve years? If, if there is the vote, I'm just saying, because not seeing the primary school, nowhere to go. That was the gist of a lot of what we're saying. There were obviously talk on, so MacArthur and Stone, or MacArthur, yes, Stone is how I'm sure, what they're called, the, 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 the length, the residences and so on, but that was mainly the issue that was coming.
I dealt with water in the general term and we dealt with flooding, fresh water, sewage water and pluvial water. And the main themes were, it all seemed to come back to responsibility and updating and maintaining the systems that we currently have, which quite clearly are medieval in most parts of the town and simply cannot cope with what they already happen to deal with. So the main concern there is we've put extra houses into the whole town strategy and it simply will not cope. It was mentioned that interesting that quite a few people thought that the developers should be held more responsible for the systems they put in for the dealing with different types of water. In so much as there ought to be perhaps better checks at the planning stage before their actual plans are agreed, before they install them, so that we don't end up in the same position as that we currently are with some estates where the, the drainage systems simply are up to scratch. All of it was trying to link into the climate change issues and a lot of suggestions about using natural solutions around Metronaut with planting, et cetera, to assist against preventative measures for flooding.
Thank you, and just a question?
Yeah, so I'll get to the town heritage and tourism, which is really interesting. So again, across the cross section of attendees, which was really, really impressive. They were fairly consistent teams, which was quite surprising. So there's a strong feeling that we don't leverage, we don't best leverage the assets within the town, especially the local town council. So for example, this building, there was a few questions around, do we underfund the current, the current services? And, you know, do we, do we, do we, do we as a town, do we do our job of selling, for example, the history around the Olympics and stuff like that? So that, that came up over and over again in each session, you know, do we, do we make the most of the heritage generally? But it kind of, in more, in relation to plans and development, there was a strong opinion that, have we had the opportunities as a town to ensure that the, you know, that the two that were quoted will be built kind of in line with the history of, history and culture and the heritage of the town? There's lots in the, in the local plan around how you, you know, you engage with the local history of towns, et cetera, with building. But that doesn't make its way through to the Metronaut section of the plan, for example. Where are the guarantees? That, for example, 120 in this pick two proposal, how does that enhance the history of Metronaut? How does that further progress the town as a town? So that was quite, that came through. The other thing was every, 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 we had five different sessions, nearly every time, should look at free parking, question mark, came up. And I think one of the conclusions was really, is it is now, is the, is the local plan the right place to pick up these things around enhancing the town? Is it now a good time to look at the neighbourhood plan again? It's right now, almost 10 years later, that came through again, what's this issue?
Okay, thanks very much. And I had developments when we talked about things like the right mix of houses being affordable and like 20% statutory is enough. The importance of climate friendly homes, trying to be passable status as much as we can of future developments. Talked about the importance of local connections, how we want to encourage that as well. And also the type of house sizes, things like building two beds would encourage people to downsize, which would free up three, four beds if people that want to, the right mix. And we talked about really the kind of, with development, we want to push for it to be sustainable with the right mix of people coming, for young families as well as older people and everything else as well. So overall, I thought that that was a fantastic opportunity for people to come together and discuss some of these issues. There was some range of views and the range of issues that were close to people's hearts, but it was important for this town council to hold a community discussion. And don't think we need to do anything yet until we really divulge the data.
Yeah, let me just mention transport.
Oh, sorry.
Yes. Good conversations about traffic, big issues, big concerns, obviously, lots of people worried about it. They could only ever see an increase in traffic. about it, they could only ever see an increase in traffic, they could only see things getting worse, and particularly what are the implications of that in terms of pollution, air pollution in particular? And what are the options for dealing with it, whether it goes from, if you've got major development to build was, more development to one lot, to run to Tassley, Pressidge, all this coming together in the middle, when not, no obvious solution's been sorted out at all, so there's a, there's a, there's kind of big unknown in that, which people are quite concerned about, really. And the absence of solutions, one is speculative, is it a bypass, is it pedestrianising the centre, and, you know, what are the risks and all that, traffic moving around at speed on medieval streets, all that sort of thing, and that needs a proper look, and I know that we've talked about this and the townwide look at the traffic needs to be done, but clearly these have not been considered in the local plan process yet, and that's part of the conversation. We've had some additional inputs, the Care Home has made a few points as well, and we've had an input from the Friends of the Century, so we need to anonymise all these comments, we can't, we don't want to assign them to individuals, GBPR reasons as well and all, so people may feel uncomfortable about that. So Chair, I think what I would suggest is that we go away, write this up, come, create the draft, send it off to the attendees so they can check it, see, see if it's going in the right direction. We can invite them to comment further, because they'll reflect and think of it more, and then we'll come back to December town council with that written up and maybe a more formal proposition.
It sounds good to me.
All right.
Do you think we need that as a formal proposal? Have to just move on.
Can I just ask you a question?
Yes.
He's a doctor, I'm not sure she was, but Jess Slaney, is she a doctor or is she the office manager?
No, Jess Harvey. Jess Harvey.
Jess Harvey.
She's the doctor.
She's senior chief of the theatre, isn't she?
Yeah, she's the charge of practice.
She was on a radio show.
Chair, Chair, can I just note also, I mean, my thanks to all colleagues who contributed themselves included, because it was a, you know, it was well facilitated, the visibility of town council was good, it was very positive, all pretty, almost all constructive, and to be honest, it wasn't difficult to do. And yeah, there's, just a note, for the record, there was no consultation prior to this, it's four, three years, almost three years, and it, I think it resonated last night that we'd actually made the effort, and that was, that was the key.
I think it has to be noted as well, we've received one letter of thanks from somebody saying, thank you for giving me the opportunity to expose my opinions.
That's good, that's good.
Thank you very much for the report, and I think we'll, we'll move on, if anyone's going to ask that. And then to item 12, arrangements for Christmas lights switch on, to consider an update on arrangements for the switch on of the Christmas lights to stay Thursday the 25th of November, councillor White, you have these bits, and then your next.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're an asking event.
Okay, well, well, I think everything is in place, to be honest with you.
In six is shut.
As a P A system for our low key event, as a P A system, it's been well advertised around the town, there are posters up, all of the, as I'm aware, all of the traders within the town seem quite keen on it and are intending to stay open late, there's arrangements for some food to be provided, the committee have purchased some items to put on sale so that they can make a bit of profit and to try and make a bit of an atmosphere, there are, there is some entertainment, I think the ukuleles are possibly still coming, I think the young farmers are singing, I think there's a belly dancing group.
Chair, I did get an email from someone in the belly dancing group saying it wasn't low key, they were going to be there.
Possibly true.
I'm underwhelmed by that.
I think, I think in reality, yeah, it'll be an interesting event, and what it will do, quite certainly, if it all comes off, will finally put to bed the fact that the council or the event itself has never really been taken that seriously, and I think that's an important thing, that if you're going to do it, you've got to do something sufficient for it to be, that was worth coming out of my house for. Because having, having come two and a half or three years ago to one, and then almost missed the switch on because there was just somebody obviously flicking a switch and it come to a halt, my grandson was horrified and went, is that it? So I certainly think it'll be more than that, which I think is good.
So will you be the caller for the 10, 9, 8?
I won't, I don't know, I've got a big enough force.
I'll do it, yeah.
What, what time?
The date is in the.
It's 5.30 for people to start gathering, 6.30 for the lights to be switched on, a 7 o'clock finish.
And are we putting any signs out to say on the date this is going to be, are we putting up one of those?
They're, they're on, they're going to be in all social media avenues that we have.
They're already, what about physical, they're already up?
They're already up, there'll be a chat windows, little posters that have been designed, and then we'll be closed from about 3.30 on the 3rd.
Have you got the resident fly?
Brilliant.
The fly's still here from another day. Yeah, so the road will be closed.
Brilliant, any other questions, any thoughts, I'd like to thank councillor White for the report and look forward to great eagerness. Tuesday 25th of November.
Bring Eric, come on.
So?
Bring, bring him on.
Well, yeah, I will, I am, I'm, I'm. I've got a couple of jobs to lay down.
Eric should be telling them, yeah.
Eric should. Thank you very much, councillor White, and then to item 13, consultation, to note the following consultation and to consider a report and response from the town council. Item A, Bridgerton Future Connectivity Plan, the deadline response for the 21st of November 2021. You might think Bridgerton Future Connectivity Plan was something to do with broadband or internet, this actually to do with highways and schemes regarding multi-storey car parks and things like that, therefore, as it's heavily transport based, I, unless the councillors have other views, I personally like to ask the transport group to respond to the town council's behalf, unless councillors have a specific view they'd like to put forward. I think it's probably important, you can argue this town council might not want to make a response or something, see far away, but with Tassley and everything else, I think it might be important that this town council does get its voice heard and the transport group seems to me the appropriate forum to do that with all, all of the members.
Sure. Sorry, I, I missed it, but who's, who's inviting the comments?
Shropshire Council.
It's not on, not on the list. It's not on the bit of paper.
No, it's not, but it is a Shropshire Council consultation. Can someone like to propose that, any other comments? Councillor Tyler?
Well, this, this has been discussed in the, within the transport group, and, and we met previously, we knew this was coming, it is something that we've got, it's something we're going to have to be being discussed.
Yeah.
But elements in there which are quite useful.
Therefore, so I'll propose formally that the town council, all its members, need to form a response for, on behalf of the town council, the transport group, forms a responsible town council. Send, we'll send that.
Do, sorry, do you want to do that, us recommending something to the next meeting or just do it independently?
Because of the timeframe, we've, they've got it pretty much doing it independently, but we'd like to see a draft of five comments via email, but we won't get to meet again before the draft deadline comes up. Thank you. Proposed, seconded, all those in favour? Motion carried, thank you. Item 14, to note the correspondence, the following items from new members, second information bulletin, now information newsletter, press release and Shropshire Council, the rule bulletins, we note those. Item 15, agenda items for the next town council meeting, members are invited to suggest items for inclusion on the agenda for the next meeting, this is not the only forum to do this, but if you'd like to text in that. Councillor Fivens?
We need to nail the budget by then, I don't know whether.
The budget? The present? But we've got till, we don't have to submit it till January, if this is on the next finance meeting?
Yes, but we will have to, if we're going to, if we're going to put it, if we're going to put it in at the beginning of January, we've got to approve it in December.
I thought we approved it in January's meeting, submitted that.
It, it depends on the deadline that, that Shropshire give us, yeah, I can check the deadline and see whether we've got the way to leave it to January or whether we need to do it in December so it can be submitted in early January, so we do that point into what that requirement is, I mean, obviously if it, if it's near enough, so next finance cover of the day, there'll be time.
Finance on the 23rd.
Yeah, so there'll be time between, between finance and the town council together on the town council agenda, so I mean, if it's done and dusted of finance, then it might be done with the town council.
Councillor Fivens?
Well, Chair just suggested there are headlines you'd like us to look at next month, without the detail, that's fine, I'm going to, just, just a bit of theory about it, for community groups.
Well, I mean, I think it's the critters remit to prepare it and bring to you a fairly complete version, by the time it gets to full council, I think.
Just worry, Mike, just speed up.
So we'll, on, on that, councillor Fivens, we'll wait till we've, when the deadline is, but we'll see how we go from next finance meeting, which is on the 23rd of November, but apparently we'll have time then to put it on the agenda for me to, just in there. Anything else, if not, we'll move on. Okay, moving on to item 16, dates of the next meeting, to note that the next meeting will be held on the 2nd of December 2021 at the Guild Hall, and we note that, and then we'll go into private session, so I propose that we go into private session on the nature of confidential nature of the item to discuss, proposed, seconded, all those in favour.
Okay.
Shut the door.
Just stop the recording, bye bye David.